All right, we're gonna call the Board of Liquor Control Commission's meeting to order. Have a motion to approve the general or the.
I make that motion.
I'll second.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. How about the minutes? It's anybody's pleasure on the minutes. Do you have a motion for that? We got a motion in a second. Any discussion, corrections, or anything? All those in favor signify by saying aye. I just have it. Any public comment or participation? For the liquor control, from anybody? Nobody in the public? Moving on to special events permit issued by the clerk. What's everybody's pleasure?
I move that we pass, uh, we, um, pass this, uh. We've already approved it, so, um, I, I vote that we approve this. I, I will make the motion that we approve this agenda.
The clerk's decision. Acknowledge clerk's decision.
Oh, Sue.
Uh, any more discussion?
Sue does the.
We used to have to have separate meetings, emergency meetings to like issue liquor permits and we found out it's authorized to do it this way.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion to adjourn? I can't, undebatable. All those in favor? It's all undebatable, man, we're good.
Talk about it, you still have to vote.
All right, we'll call the Brandon Board of Selectment meeting order. Uh, how about the agenda? Adoption of the agenda.
Go ahead.
Oh, second.
Any discussion or changes or anything?
Um, I just, as long as the discussion involves a good explanation of constable positions. Cause I didn't have a chance to go see it before this meeting, so.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll, we'll do that in the.
When you get into public session.
Number eight.
Yeah.
Yeah, as long as that includes that, I'm good.
All right, all of the favors signify by saying aye. I just have it. Approval of the minutes first, July twenty fourth, twenty three. Anybody's? Motion to approve is our second?
Um, I second it.
Second, any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to add just a teeny bit of discussion. I was, I was gonna hold this off, but it just struck me that now's as good a time as ever. Um, I've been, um, learning a little bit more about the benefits of different kinds of note taking. And even while I'm, um, very impressed with Charlene's ability to capture, um, in many cases verbatim, um, discussion. Um, I've, I've read about the benefits of having notes be more condensed. So there are more motions and results of the motion. Um, uh, and, and I think it might be beneficial, um, for us to move to that, um, format of, of note taking.
Okay, any? What else got any? I mean, now, you're, you're my next one.
Fine by me. It's a lot less work.
Yeah, I tried to take notes like you, Charlene, at some meeting where you weren't.
I guess I don't.
I, I, I think part of it is that, you know, um, as far as looking back and trying to find information, it's often helpful to have it in a more condensed sense of like, this is the motions that were made, by who made them. And this is the result. And, um, and, and I think that, um, unlike a court where we're trying to get a transcript, I think a transcript serves a different purpose. And since we have the Zoom, um, if somebody really wants to see everything that was said, they could watch the Zoom. And, um, and so, yeah, I, I've, I've been thinking about this for a while. It just popped up today.
I mean, as, as long as Charlene's okay with it.
I mean, if I can chime in with notes.
What you would like.
Yeah, if I could chime in with just, I mean, I agree that, uh, our minutes probably don't need to be as comprehensive as they've been, although I do enjoy them. Um, it does sometimes help to, at least if there is a discussion about something that is voted on where either like, um, I don't know, important information is discussed or there are like definite difference of opinions that if at least that gets um, noted somehow, even if we don't have like verbatim dialogue, just that, you know, there was extensive discussion about X. Um, something that, that, that just kind of helps if someone is searching back through the minutes for background on a decision that was made in the past. They can see the minutes and go like, oh yeah, so extensive discussion was made about this particular issue. I'm gonna go look at the Zoom now, um, for what that's worth.
Anything else for anybody from the board? Yeah.
Maybe what you could do is have the motion and then have the result of the motion and then put the discussion last. So just on a quick bullet, you can see what the motion was, the result. And then the discussion below, so that way the main things are first. And then if you don't wanna read the discussion, you don't have to.
Yeah, that would, I mean, that would work for me. And, and like I said, even the, the, it doesn't have to be a transcript of the discussion, just a note that there was discussion. Whereas sometimes we don't discuss anything at all and, you know, we don't need to go looking for it.
That's something that you wanna put into a motion or? Go on to another meeting or try to think about it?
Well, it sounds like we may have, um, a little bit of a consensus. Uh, if you think I need to make a motion and we need to vote, I'm happy to do that. Um, I'm wondering if, if it's sufficient to, um, have, uh, Charlene understand from what our discussion was, um, what we like to do going forward. Did you feel?
I don't think there's a need.
Then, are you, are you okay with those?
Absolutely.
My question is, Charlene, is that?
If there's not enough detail in a meeting, you know, minutes, once I start doing that way.
We can tell you.
You can let me know.
Yeah, that's very reasonable.
Any other discussion on the minutes?
So Seth, I've been also putting in your report so that people can see it. Do we now leave that off since they can access it in the documents?
Published in the minutes of, I mean, in the packet for the meeting.
Right, as long as it's in the packet, it seems like that's a reasonable place for it to be.
Okay, good. Yeah, and the same with the recreation director's report. I think, you know, you just need to know, they're in the agenda, they're in the packet.
Do, do you get the packet, Charlie? Oh, good. So, so that way you know what's, what's there that doesn't need to be duplicated.
Right.
Great.
Any other discussion on this? Any other discussion on the minutes? If not? We didn't have a motion.
We need to vote, we have a motion.
Okay, couldn't remember who made the motion.
No, this is for approval of minutes. Using that as an opportunity to discuss the minutes.
So we're voting on approving them?
Approving.
Okay.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. I just have it. Town manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, members of the public. Um, I did submit my report in advance and it's published on the town website in the board packet. I would highlight that yes, the Arnold District Road will be closed most of the workdays the rest of this week. Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, um, as they're doing roadwork, uh, to rebuild the base before paving. And I would restate, uh, that Newton Road does officially remain closed except to residents and it should not be traveled by through traffic. Other than that, um, I did have a follow-up item in my report, um, and in response to a question that was asked at the previous meeting, there has been some progress on reducing the dollar amount and the number of properties that are delinquent and need to go to tax sale. There was no progress in the utility bill side because there were additional bills sent during that same time period. You know what I mean? Like there were more, there's more owed, uh, just as a matter of routine billing. And, uh, Jackie has clarified, I kind of am reliant on Jackie for how the, uh, tax sale process goes. Uh, she's clarified that there needs to be August interest posted, which happens tomorrow, actually. At that point, the town sends a thirty day notice to the taxpayers, but at the same time, the town attorney's office will start doing the deed research to get the tax sale ready, but that will take apparently a, a number of weeks, which either puts it in right between Thanksgiving and the other holidays of the year, which is not desirable. Or puts it off till, till January. So it appears that they're on for a January tax sale. Okay, so that clarified the questions. So the rest of the report, um, I won't bother to highlight. I'll give you my updates for things that happened today. This was a very, very full day, uh, today at the town office. Um, we did go up to Newton Road to have an onsite meeting with the, uh, folks who are interested in bidding on demolishing three houses that the town has already taken title to, one in Burke Park and two on Newton Road. And there were nine contractors there for the site visit, which is exceptionally higher than anybody's expectation. And is a very good sign that we'll get a good competitive bid out of it. Um, we had a meeting, uh, with police chief and some concerned citizens about some, uh, community policing matters. Um, I did meet with the highway foreman about, um, a succession plan at the highway department. And I would, uh, this is a new thing that wouldn't have been in the packet. His recommendation, and I think, um, it makes all the sense in the world, uh, his recommendation is because he's planning to complete his service to the town toward the end of January, that at this point, we do the personnel policy requirements, which are to internally post the job first of highway foreman and seek a candidate internally before we seek a candidate externally. That's kind of how that, you know, is supposed to be according to our policy. And he does not think it's appropriate for him to be involved with, um, hiring his replacement. So I would respectfully request that the select board might consider, um, appointing two members of the select board to assist and that if the select board is inclined to have a role in the highway foreman selection.
I would be glad to.
I'm happy to have them do it.
I'm happy to do it, but I think you guys are well suited to it. Have at it.
Cecil, did, did you, uh, catch the conversation? Seems like Tracy and Brian are interested in being a working group to help select the next highway foreman?
I did, and that's fine by me.
Okay, so if that's, um, if that's acceptable to the board, we'll go ahead and get the posting ready for the internal position posting and ask, um, this working group of Brian and Tracy to sit in on the interview, be part of the interview. I, we have a new FEMA contact, which is a great step in the formal process of getting public assistance, which is, um, what we will be asking for, for the major reconstruction expenses. And we have a new contact at the State Emergency Operations Center about debris removal on Newton Road. So that was, that was a, a good productive amount of progress today.
Sounds it. Sounds like you were busy when I talked.
It was, it was a busy day. So, questions?
Any questions for the town manager from the board?
Yeah, I noticed in your notes, um, that you had spoken with our energy committee chair about, um, possible, um, solar. And so, um, I wonder if there was, um, anything that you wanted to add other than a couple of sentences you have here?
I, I guess I could, I could say that the energy committee's got a couple or three different prospects for citing, and that's really like the next step um, that the developer has told them they need to kind of nail down a possible site that will work so that the actual design can can be done. Um, further on energy matters, I did have, uh, a telephone call and an email exchange with the school district about, um, their interest in pursuing an electric school bus for their fleet. And they have selected Brandon as the town in which they would run any electric school bus first as a pilot program. Um, so they're applying for that.
That's great news. Thank you.
Anything else from the board for the town manager? Anything from the public for the town manager? It's not. All right, we'll go to the, I guess the rec directors report, we're just, we've read it, I mean, unless you wanna comment on that, Seth, or?
Uh, I, I don't have any comments on it.
Okay.
I don't know, anybody?
I have one question about the rec directors report about the, um, car show benefiting the Rottlin County Humane Society. And just wondering, um, is this a town sponsored event? For the humane society or is it under the auspices? I'm just not quite sure how, what the town's involvement is.
I do not know the specifics, answer Cecil, I'm sorry. I would assume that because it's at the top of Bill's report and it's happening at Estherbrook Park, that the, the town is probably sponsoring it.
Yeah, I'm just wondering in terms of expenses, you know, is it coming out of the town budget or is how that's, if it's all being done by volunteers, but?
I, I guess I'm not even a lot on a limit, say, but usually things that happen like that, um, I believe your, it's probably, probably the ground was given to use and your contestants' cars, whatever. I think that's, I don't know how they make their fund, uh, do a fundraising if it's, if it's free, but.
They may have an entry fee for the.
Saying, I think it's, I think it's done probably through the entry fees. I don't know.
I have no idea.
Bill is out of town, but Bill will be back, uh, Wednesday and we can certainly get an answer out to the select board.
Yeah, I was just curious.
Anything else on the rec? Director's report.
Yeah, you have him, uh, get the financials for the carnival.
Absolutely.
Is, does the public need to just write it out to him? Take care to hear.
It's in the package.
It's in the packet, so. All right. We're gonna move on to public comment. It's in participation. It's not on the agenda and we'll start with Cecil. You have anything from the board?
Nope.
Heather?
No, thank you.
Brian? Kim?
Good.
I only got one short little thing. Um, I'd like for the board, uh, to start kinda figuring what we wanna do with this ARPA funds that are left.
I agree.
I would like to see, I, I would like to see something done with it before we get into budget season, before we get into our budget planning in November, um, so I think, you know, we, we have a, we have a list. What's that?
Should we make that as a goal for the next meeting?
Well, over the next one or two, or, you know, I don't, I'm just saying as long as we've got it done, well in advance of the budget meeting, um, we've got a list from last meeting that Seth had compiled and everybody's got their own. Um, you know, separate things that they think they wanna have, um, I mean, I look at the, just using you as an example, it spoke about the town hall here. It would be nice to have some, have some numbers, figures on maybe other than just repairing a slate, just so we got a bunch of different numbers.
Yeah, I agree.
Um, but I just would, I would like to see us have that taken care of before we definitely get into our budget.
Yeah, I guess it'd be nice to come up with, um, a process so we get to the end. Um, and like you say, we've gathered lots of ideas. Should, should we say that at the next meeting, um, we, um, we narrow those ideas down to like three or four and then by the second meeting after that, we'll, um, we'll vote and?
Yeah, I mean, I think that we, I think that we should make it a goal to have them narrowed, narrowed down.
At the next meeting.
Well, narrow, start narrowing them down at the next meeting, yeah. And then move forward and then vote on them and get it.
Get it done.
Get it done. I mean, we've, we've, we've had that one over our head long and off.
I agree.
Um, but that's all I had for the public comment. Does, how about from the public? Anything at all? Jan?
On Friday upstairs, the town hall is showing the hundredth anniversary of the Tech of Commandments for a silent movie. It's at seven o'clock.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Ralph?
I think it's too early to say because they have suspended work for much of the summer. Um, the equipment that they had ordered is coming in at the expected price, you know, for, like, there was some big equipment that will be installed. And I don't think that they have not expressed, and we have a meeting like every other week with the engineers to have a progress check. Although since I've been town manager, most of the progress has been in hiatus, you know, it's been very limited discussion. But they continue to think that they will be, uh, on schedule and usually on schedule really closely correlates with on budget or not because of you know, labor and engineering costs and stuff, either extending or not.
Yes, I know there was some interest, there was some pretty heavy input.
There were some for the, for the shutdown period, yeah.
Anything else from the public? If not, we'll go on to the Union Street goal discussion.
So, Mr. Chair, I did put in the packet a little one-page, um, bit that says Union Street project notes. And that is not any new information to you. It's just information that had previously been provided. And I, I'm just looking for the sense of the board in terms of what the board would like to see for a direction on Union Street, um, whether it's sticking with the current plan with just the sidewalks or whether you want to attempt to fold in the uh, drinking water with fire district. Obviously, the match would be provided by the fire district in that case. Or adding in the weight and/or adding in the wastewater, in which case the match would be provided by the wastewater users. Um, and the additional engineering that would be required to do that. So, um, the town's match on these programs that the engineers provided to us, you know, it ranges from a twenty percent match to a fifty percent match, um, depending on which amount we, or sorry, which program we qualify for, for the work.
Yeah, I, I, I looked at your, um, at your report here in the packet and, um, and found it to be interesting. And, um, it seems to make sense that we include, um, the nine hundred feet of drinking water and nine hundred feet of wastewater, because if we're gonna have the road tore up, it's like, that's the time. And, um, and thus we need to have the engineering for the water and the wastewater. And so I, I suggest that we go forward with the, um, the total for reconstruction that you have listed here, which is one point five six nine million.
Is that a motion?
I, I make that motion.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
It, it seems to me that, I mean, we're going to have to do drinking water and wastewater anyway at some point and why tear up the road twice?
And I guess the other part I was going to draw attention to is that, um, Seth has, has, um, admirably identified that if we go forward in this way, there's different pots of money we can go after.
Absolutely.
To help defer some of this cost. And so, um, I, I, I think there may be another decision that gets made after we gather more information about how to finance, about whether, how we're gonna do this. But I think that this will at least give you the direction that you're looking for.
And it's, I mean, it's, I agree, it's, it's kinda crazy not to do the whole thing.
I just wanna make sure I understand. So the, the original thought was we need to redo the sidewalks. Yes. But then once we were redoing the sidewalks, we realized we might wanna consider handling the stuff under the road because of the well being torn up anyway. Is that kind of the gist? Yeah, okay. I just wanna make sure, so.
Well, it's just a matter, you do it now and then, five years down the road, you have to tear this all up again.
Well, and we were certainly identified in recent meetings, the, um, importance of keeping our sewer and water, um, up to.
That sounds, that sounds fine. I just wanted to make sure that I didn't.
Benefit from economies of scale, like they pointed out, you know, if we do it all at once, it might be cheaper than doing it in two stages.
Oh, I hadn't thought about that. That's a good point. Okay.
Any other discussion? If not, we've got a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. I'm opposed. I just have it.
So, um, Chair, Mr. Chair, I, I mistakenly forgot to ask our town manager something during his section.
Too late, Nate.
We need the transcript on that one.
Cause I, I, I had expected to see, uh, uh, an agenda item on the, uh, Brandon landfill, um, water quality monitoring.
Okay.
And then when I went back and looked, I noticed that it wasn't there and I saw that it was under town manager's report, which is appropriate. But I just have a few questions and, um, and I thought it would be, um, helpful to do this in, in public rather than have me just go ask him. So, um, as I went through this report, it was very interesting and I was actually kinda fascinated at the level of detail that some of the science was exposed to us about how they do testing and retesting and look for contamination and look for of, you know, all kinds of curious things. But something that kinda got by me was it, or, or stopped, stopped me was, um, this is in the, um, the first page. In the second paragraph where it says background, and it's talking about the, um, the standards that have to be met. And it says manganese, arsenic, and lead remain at levels above Vermont groundwater enforceable standards, VGES. And I gotta assume that those standards are established for, um, that, that they, that they have a meaning. And thus if we're above them, what does that mean for us?
Um, it would, it could eventually mean that some remediation is required where we need to, you know, do some actual.
So isn't it that we're not above by a certain amount? Cause if we're above, I would think that would automatically trigger the necessity of remediation.
I think that the main thing with the landfill that the engineers, when I've spoken with them on the phone about the report, told me to bear in mind was that it's all about keeping water safe for users of water. And they believe that the landfill's situation topographically, geologically, is such that while the water in the monitoring wells at the landfill contains metals that we would not want to drink.
Right.
That we are not going to establish a drinking source from there. And that any drinking sources that are known, which are pretty well documented, are far enough away or the wrong direction, so to speak.
Yeah, I, I picked that up too, um, so that's helpful.
That's, that, that was my understanding from them about actionability.
So, um, and, and that goes on to, um, the, the next page. Um, after the three bullet points of chloride, VOC, and PFAs, it goes on to explain that, um, at three of the four wells, they were again above the VGES standard, um, with the highest level being at with that third, the, the third well, MW five. Um, and then I, I go on to note a sentence later, total regulated PFAs exceeded VGAS at MW two. And so I, I just, I, um, ma- maybe it would be helpful for me to, um, uh, to have a brief conversation with the, uh, with these people, just to understand at what point.
We could ask them to come and talk to the select board. You know, they're, they're happy to do that.
I, I, I think what I'm, what I'm sensitive to is if there's something we should do, I wanna be sure we're doing it. And if, if I, if I'm assured that with, just because it's exceeded a limit, it hasn't triggered the need for remediation, I'm good with that too.
So they're, um, they're kind of, one of their tasks is to make sure that we are doing what we should do. And the state of Vermont has said to them and through them to us that they want us to continue two more cycles of PFAS monitoring and continuing with the regular metals monitoring before any plan kind of rises to the point where we should be actually like doing something other than monitoring. So we're, we're in a phase where they said, you know, if you looked at the long report, they showed different levels over time and some are dropping. Um, some had some erratic, you know, measurements, like they all had an erratic measurement like three years ago kind of thing for some reason. Um, and so what KAS engineer has told us is, you know, uh, this was the spring monitoring, do a fall monitoring, do a spring monitoring, and the state made by then, you know, see whether.
And, and I should, I should. And and I should, I should say, the other point I noticed for the benefit of public, specifically you, um, is that there's a sentence in there that caught my eye. Um, it says overall metal concentrations appear to have decreased from their respective historical peaks, which I think is a good trend. And as far as the overall safety of our our site.
And just that there is some fluctuation which signs. You know.
That's yeah, that's great. Thanks. That's what I agree with.
It's it's super um helpful that much of the neighborhood there is on town water. There's there's very few private wells in any any short distance of the land.
Anything else on that? All right, we'll go fiscal.
Wait, what about the town council? The discussion, the discussion of the town constable?
Oh, we're we're doing the fiscals first on the agenda, then the constable.
Oh, okay.
Item seven, yep.
If that was to keep the constable discussion with the potential executive session above const.
Ah, I see.
That that's why that order was, no.
What's everybody's pleasure on?
Um, I make a motion that we pass the first warrant for nine hundred and seventy-five dollars for FY twenty-two, twenty-three.
Easy one.
Uh, second, any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pause. Uh, warrant B.
I'm gonna let you make this one.
Okay, I'll make the motion approved of fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, August.
Uh, twenty-three, twenty-four.
Twenty-three, twenty-four, August, uh, warrant amount of six hundred sixty-three thousand eight hundred one dollars and eighty-two cents.
We have a sat you.
I'll second.
Second. All those, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, we did have some discussion.
So on the third page, there's a charge for heat pump maintenance.
Right.
Those are thirteen hundred dollars.
Right.
What's that for?
So um the heat pumps at the town office get serviced um every year, really. And they come in and they drain the pumps and they make sure that the refrigerant is not leaking and they determine that there is refrigerant leaking in one of the heat pumps. Uh, so it's that kind of preventative maintenance that um the same company that installed them, which is Newton, uh, they come back and they do a periodic check.
So was that something that's been added to the budget every year?
I believe this has been an ongoing thing in the past. I don't know, cause I have not been part of the day to day at the town office, but it's been there before.
Expensive service.
It is an expensive.
We have a lot of heat.
To be fair, that's a big, yeah, it's a building with four outside condensers and eight or nine indoors.
Does it include?
Okay, that's good to know.
This this was just the town office.
Disappointed that they couldn't just loop that in.
All right.
I don't know if the town hall ones have even been in for a year. I don't think they have.
We got a motion on the table. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. And I'm gonna abstain.
Okay.
Uh, discussion on the of the constable's position.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we need one.
That was gonna be my question as well.
Is the last.
Care for a little info?
Absolutely.
Okay, so um the the way the statute is apparently is the towns are required to have one, required to have a position of first constable. Three quarters or so of the towns in Vermont elect them and a quarter appoint them. So in twenty fourteen in Brandon, the town meeting voted to have the select board appoint the constable. An elected constable is not beholden to either the select board or the chief of police if there's a police department in the town. An appointed constable would be under the oversight of the select board who appoints that person to that position. The constable, I I sent out just uh today, you know, some brief snippets of information from both the Vermont Criminal Justice Council, which is the people who run the police academy, and from VLCT, and there's a limited number of things that a constable with no law enforcement training can do. A constable who has law enforcement training can do anything a law enforcement officer in Vermont can do, but only within the town of Brandon and only what the select board directs him or her to do as a law enforcement officer. I spoke with the police chief about it. Um, he wants to emphasize that a constable, should you choose to appoint one, a constable would report to you as a select board and not to the police chief as the chief of police. It would be a different kind of.
Janice Commander.
Exactly.
Is.
Yes.
Is it like a, well, I mean, I guess I'm gonna reveal my my new page, like, it's a full-time paid position?
It is not.
It is not. So it's like us, like volunteer.
So in the past, you may remember Gigi.
Yes, I do remember.
So he bought his own Molly Pops.
So Gigi was an elected constable.
Yeah.
Before the requirement that the, so the state requirement was in twenty twelve, they they made a big, big change that elected constables would be limited in what they could do based on whether or not they had law enforcement certification on their own.
That might explain it.
So twenty, that was twenty twelve, so that kind of makes sense that twenty fourteen was when Brandon decided to take a little different look at it. So the town voted for the board to appoint the constable. And since that time, the constable's position has generally been vacant in Brandon. There was one exception in that time when Chief Brickell um offered to be the constable and was appointed by the select board as constable concurrent with his duties as the head of the agency. Something else just slipped my mind.
So it would be somebody that could be a police officer, but they add on these extra duties during their police officer workday?
Usually not during the police.
As a volunteer.
It's like the concept, in a town with a police department, the concept would be to augment the services provided by the police department. And and oh, this is the other distinction. Elected constables have to live in the town where they're going to be the constable. Appointed constables do not have to live in the town where they're going to be the constable.
Okay.
And so do I understand that one choice to the select board is to not appoint and leave it vacant?
Correct.
Okay.
But otherwise, their duties are what, like, what would it look like? If you elected a constable, like, what would I?
So I'll just give you the the seven bullet points that are, no, no, this is the serve similar or criminal process, so some of those things like that.
Okay.
Destroy animals, kill injured deer, assist the health officer in discharge of their duties, serve as a district court officer, remove disorderly people from town meeting, collect taxes when no tax collector is elected.
Okay.
So that's um that's all constables, but a constable with law enforcement certification in Vermont would also be able to do all the things that a law enforcement person with sort of with that certification can do.
So if it was a police officer that we appointed constable, we would not have it wouldn't make us have a say over their police officer job. It would make us have a say over their constituent duties. I guess I just don't understand.
So you could influence how much time you wanted to pay a constable to work separately. So Gigi was was paid a small amount, there was a stipend involved.
Okay.
And you could determine for the constable, like, yeah, working conditions, basically.
So, so I'm sorry, can we just back up a little? Cause I I haven't had a chance to look through all the statutes. I I looked at um the materials you provided. So we are required by law to have a constable, is?
No, what we just established, I'm sorry, I may not have said it loud enough, um, is that one one option to the select board is that um we can choose not to appoint. Because apparently many of the years recently, we've left this the position vacant.
So the quote, the quote that I would offer up if I could uh from VLCT is, a town must elect a first constable and if needed, a second at annual town meeting. Alternatively, a town may vote to authorize the select board to appoint a constable. And there's no kind of follow-up statement that the select board must appoint.
Yeah, so I I haven't had a chance to review the statutes because I the the VLCT language was confusing to me in that it made it sound like the town must appoint it by electing or give it over to the select board to appoint, but it absolutely wasn't clear, like you just said, whether that meant that the select board must then appoint. Um, because, you know, frankly, I just don't really see the need for a town constable at this point. Um, unless they can enforce the zoning laws, because I know that our zoning administrator is only part-time and doesn't have time to do that.
That is, that is an option uh available to a constable. Like the select board could designate the constable to assist the animal control officer, the zoning officer, the rental health officer, any of those positions.
I I I would um, I I I would echo your your comment, um, Cecil, and and I would also say I appreciate um any um volunteering to um help the town. So this is in no way casting an aspersion on um people who want to um offer their services to help us. So I I'm wanna say that. But it, I I I think I come down on, we have a police department and I'm not sure we need to augment our police department by having a constable. Um, and so.
Well, I mean, as Seth said in that um, please, they would have to report to the select board anyways, they wouldn't report to the.
The constable would, right.
I get that correct, I mean.
When they're doing constable duties.
Right.
I mean, like. Right. If you were have, if you had a police officer, they would essentially have one boss for their employment as a Brandon police officer and one for their employment as the Brandon constable.
And then we could ask them to back up the animal control officer if Tim was.
Well, we can already do that with our police. I mean, they have done.
So things, things that I, in theory, I can see is, so I know an ongoing problem. Well, not an ongoing problem, but an issue that the police department has is um we've had numerous issues with farm owners not controlling their livestock and the livestock getting out in the roads and causing traffic hazards and you know, police time has been spent rounding them up. I can see, okay, maybe that's something the constable could help with um. Uh, and like I said, you know, a lot of zoning doesn't get enforced because we only have a part-time zoning administration. So yeah, that's something the constable could help with. Um, I guess I just you know, those aren't necessarily things that need any law enforcement duties. And so I know you can have a constable who doesn't have law enforcement authorization. And so, you know, maybe if we're gonna have a constable, that would be the direction I'd go in. But again, I'm just not sure there's a burning need for one.
Pleasure to the board.
Well, um I think this was the discussion, and so are we gonna go into executive?
Well, I think we need to, yes, probably that's where we're just a discussion and we need to go into executive session.
So.
I'm sorry, wasn't the purpose of executive session to be to actually appoint someone if we thought we needed one?
My understanding was that the public session would be used to determine whether the position was gonna be filled.
Okay.
And that the executive session would be used, if needed, to evaluate applications.
Okay, there we have it.
Do you want to have some public comment?
Yeah, we have public comment? Yeah.
I have questions. Um, so uh Seth, he said a moment ago that a previous constable did receive a stipend. Um, would that be the case? This was that.
That would be, that would be between the board and whoever the appointed constable was.
Was, do you have any sense of what that stipend was in the past?
I do not.
I mean, I believe the the constable you're speaking of was Gigi, correct?
Yeah.
And he was the elected, Gigi was an elected constable, not an appointed one. And I don't know what that was then, other than, other than I know that he was elected in two thousand.
I would say it was modest conversation.
Two thousand fourteen.
Two thousand fourteen is when we went to the appointment.
And that kind of stayed vacant until chief took it, but there wasn't any money at the time, it was.
Hourly rate type compensation or like a four hundred dollars a quarter type compensation?
I think that's something that has to be, if, I think that's something that if we decide to go with a constable that we have to do that in executive session with.
And it'll probably be analogous to the animal control officer that gets a stipend for every month or something, and then, you know, it's 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 that, it it'll be analogous to another position we have like that.
Okay, thank you. I was just curious, like.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm Mr. Javon, name, that was obviously I would very dispossess. I am one of the people that, if I had nothing, would be the one to fill that role. Uh, that being said, I have done a lot of research in that role, and maybe I want to bring that uh better understand that I know if I were to get one to do it, you know, what I would expect. Um, I would be more than happy to discuss that personally, where I see it, I'm already a law person, certified officer. Uh, I don't think there needs to be extra additional funding allocated from the town to that role. The town already pays for the other police officer. Uh, that being said, the only overlap that would uh increase in my duties would be uh if I operate in a you know, a capacity as a constable, which I really need to be few and foremost, you know, must hold upon by the select board to do so. Maybe during a busy, contentious meetings and you want to have somebody there. Um, you know, maybe that we can discuss excitement or something like that, but given still uh necessity that seems quite small to me, but some these are things that are quite tight in the grand, this department has this. I know that the chief of police have had a discussion with them about this, is yeah, requesting me to go my name uh into the, the habit of, if you will. Yeah, yeah, he said that it would be completely separate from the police department. However, because I'm a brand officer, I would have access to all of our resources as well, that are necessary. So it would say, you know, if we did, if somebody, because we had to ultimately, it's somebody um, he had not, he didn't, he was not access to these resources as well without it happening, without bothering. So, but something that I want to keep in mind, and so that, like I said, I'm fairly impressed with this. I guess I have a pretty good understanding, I believe, of how um the constable role applies into the system, either how how also of the data, you know, how also to, uh, I will say we definitely, I know that I spoke with Tim many times, but I probably uh, I'm an officer, not so much, so uh Tom has issues, you know, that's something that I think.
Larry, Larry, no.
Yeah.
Yeah, Larry Stevens.
So um, you know, that would be more appropriate for something like a constable. Um, regardless of, and like I said, that's something I would have to look into, like the difference between a municipal officer and constable. Because the the constable has the ability to involve themselves with civil matters, um, such as, you know, budget taxes, but not compared to a municipal department, which has no say in that. Things like certain papers and whatnot that are outside the criminal scope of the state's law. Um, maybe that's where the constitution is still, so.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Javon, a couple, couple other questions about this. Um, would constable, having been uniformed, would he be armed? Uh, what sort of, if the, you know, what? How would it be different from a police officer in terms of reliability? Like, would it be on the town's insurance policy if somebody got hurt? If a constable hurt somebody, how does that operate, and is there qualified immunity for police officers, is that applied to constables?
The constable would be operating under the town's liability as an appointed official of the town. I do not know whether explicitly qualified immunity devolves to a constable or not.
Yeah, if you're just shaking your head, you'd like to.
Yeah, so for my.
Touch on that.
Qualified immunity applies to all law-pleaded officers operating in a law-fulfilling capacity. Uh, a constable, a law-fulfilled officer, as long as they're certified, as such. So we did have absolutely those protections, I think. Okay, so that's my chief also, I think that's operating police department, I suppose. Um, it falls under the town, it's not important, so.
Yeah, thank you.
So qualified immunity actually applies to any public official that can be accused of violating someone's constitutional rights. So it doesn't, it's not just law enforcement. It's uh basically any public employee, public official, anyone that can be sued for violating a constitutional right Public employee, public official, anyone that can be sued for violating a constitutional right is um qualified immunity is a defense.
Um would the hospital have a uniform, would it be armed?
I.
It would be up to the select board.
And that's something that we haven't.
We haven't crossed that.
We haven't crossed that bridge yet because we haven't even made the decision if we're gonna appoint one.
I guess on my mind is, I'm curious. Why? Like. Why chief um.
It's changing.
It's changing. Um why he might be interested in this? Because.
He is not.
He's not.
He, no, not interested in being interested in having one, he is not.
It was not his idea.
Well, the fact that he suggested that one of his officers. Put their hat in the ring means he has some interest in this, but um.
I think we might be skating on the edge of executive session kinds of.
Okay, then that, that's just a question that I, that I would be curious about is. Um. What? The police chief's opinion is, and I would just want more information, just because this is really new to me. I remember Gigi. That's basically what I knew about constables before. This patch.
So what, what, what he asked me to convey to the select board on the matter is that he wanted to emphasize that. The constable in their capacity as a constable would not be reporting to the chief of police. But to you as a select.
Okay.
Um. So what's the board's pleasure? Up, one more.
Would it be, is, would it be fair to say that the distinction between a police officer and a constable is a police officer can be, say, summoned by the public and call the police and then. They arrive, whereas the constable is sort of sent by the select board.
The constable not sent by the select board. Um the, the, the constable's uh roles are, can be defined by the select board. Which means they can either be defined as having almost no authority and they're little more than.
The way of coal.
The way of coal. Or they can be defined as a full-blown police officer if you have some of those qualifications. And, and so there's everything in between that and so um.
But I'm, I guess what I'm wondering is, is it possible that the public could call the constable and ask for assistance?
If we, if we define.
Well, if we define it that way, yes.
It, it's a, it's a completely flexible definition. I appreciate you're trying to get a hold of it, but it, it, and I'm not trying to be elusive, but it's just that wide right now. It's, it's literally everything from layer of coal to, you know, a full-blown police officer.
It, it all depends on what the select board. Designates. And so if we designate him or her to enforce town ordinances. Then a member of the town community who believes an ordinance has been violated could contact the constable just as they would contact a police officer. So I mean, it really like. Tim and Tracy were saying, it really depends on what we would authorize the constable to do, but I'm again gonna say, I just don't see why we need one.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be. A or annoying here, but it does, it does seem that this discussion should be had in public, but what the constable is wanting to do. And then the appointment of the constable happens inside the session, we actually discuss. The specific applications, but like parameters, that seems like it's something should be happened in public.
Yeah, it seems like that's one step past where we are though. It's uh, it's, it sounds like first we need to decide whether we're either gonna have one.
Right, and that's, that's what we're, that's what we're talking about now, is if we're even gonna have. A position, the, the constable position filled. And if we do decide that we're gonna fill the constable position, we would go into an executive session and we would choose. What we have for. Applicants as a constable.
So you would choose the constable and then figure out what the parameters of position are?
We could do it that way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, so what's anybody's?
If you'd like to make a motion.
Like a motion or you can.
We can just take no mo, make no motion.
Make no motion and.
And we're done with the discussion.
Do we go into executive session?
If we don't have anybody to appoint, no.
What's pleasure of the board?
Yes, we're done with the discussion.
Done with the discussion?
Yes.
All right.
Motion again.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Opposed?